All right, at this time, we will begin our work study session for the Adrian City Commission on August 21st, 2023, roll call please. Mary, present. Mr. Health.
Present.
Mr. Robert.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Caspary.
Present.
Mr. Gau.
Present.
All commission members present. And at this time, I will hand it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to deviate from the scope a little bit here and take care of a couple items related to our regular meeting agenda. First, if we could. We need to be on there. I emailed you all over the weekend about the early voting agreement with county. Unfortunately, we did not receive that, Christie and I, until Saturday. And the county has imposed the deadline of August 29th for us to opt in or out. So we have two choices, either have it to our agenda tonight, which I know you don't like to do, but I expect you might do that more than you'd like to have a special meeting, so. Um, just to summarize for that, for all those here, Michigan law going forward does not affect in 2024 at all. I don't, or 2023 at all, I don't think we're a demonstration, you know, they. But in 2024, there will be mandated by now our constitution that's been by the voters last time around. Nine days of early voting ending on Sunday prior to election day. We talked about this at the Michigan Municipal Executives Conference, but actually that's enough there. The preferred way to deal with that, county can designate one voting site and the county clerk can conduct that early voting for everyone. Obviously, or maybe not so obviously, the expenses associated with doing that for all the municipalities in the county are virtually the same as they are for each municipality to do it, so. It really seems like a good deal for everybody to us. Put the agreement in your, well, in your email, I have copies here if anyone needs that. Also, cost breakdown in your email there also have copies if you need it. Twenty-five thousand and change for us. With a larger municipality, obviously, it's proportionate to the number of voters. So I would like to include that as our 2330 on your agenda. If that's acceptable to you, so that we can avoid having to have a special meeting. Get that done. We knew this was coming. I didn't know it was coming quite this soon. The city attorney is in accord with the agreement as well, so. Any concerns about that?
No, but I do have a question. So would primary elections be required to have early voting as well, or just a general election?
If it's a presidential primary, yeah.
Okay, but how about a city?
No.
I have a question. When this was brought up, I don't know, a few months ago. Who has mentioned that we wouldn't be able to use the fairgrounds because they have other things going on, so. Has anybody looked at another site? From what I, from what I read, the county was going to do it at the Human Services building, right? One location, county one.
Are the agreement. At the helm.
Any questions or concerns?
So. And twenty-five thousand is one year. Twenty-five thousand.
It's for election.
Are, um, right. And the sort of costs are obviously going to be four. Five thousand is for 2024.
And we should say that that was predicated upon all the municipalities out there, some of them out there. You'd have to be. I, I, I wouldn't think anybody would. Really want to have that.
Because otherwise Adrian Township has a polling site for nine days.
For the nine days.
Before, for seven AM to eight. And pay the people for all those hours.
Right.
Because I'm trying to just be sure I'm understanding.
Have all the machines, the machines mobilized.
Right.
So that's where I hope to amend the agenda. Anything else? Mr. Gauss wanted to talk about, after getting about all the items we have on regular agenda. Matt can hear us, although he's.
Yeah.
He's on Zoom. It's the item related to the. Fiore roof replacement. So what we had asked for you to do is to approve a change order to do all of the roof at this time. I think when Matt did it, he, he was doing so with the understanding that we had a certain budget in the mouth. That's what we wanted to spend this year. The reality of the situation is a little bit different. As we've talked about in the past, the Swire Trust funded, or the Swire of the state funded the endowment that has provided a pot of money for generally, I think, senior center in the city of Adrian. That money's, it was in that pot much of it, and the center has been established. When we, when I first became an administrator, I was asked to look into whether the county would be interested in taking over ownership of the Fiore Center since essentially they operate the senior center, Department of Management operates the senior center. At that time, Marty Marshall told me, well, please fix the roofs. Since then, we looked in, or give us the money that you have for that purpose. Well, city attorney looked into this some time back, determined that we are not able, we can transfer the property so long as it continues to be a senior center, but we cannot transfer the endowment. So. I don't know that we want to do that, but if we, if all our options are going to be on the table, or if we really need to get the roof in a condition where we could do that. Yeah, the, the, the bid that we, so we received a set of competitive bids related to the, a portion of the roof. Obviously, those are based on unit pricing, and so I think it's fair to, as long as the same unit prices carry forward in the, in the, then, but, you know, that is also a competitive price. So I asked Matt to put that on the agenda for you, so we can just get the whole thing done this year. We would not have time to rebid it, and really it wouldn't be fair to rebid it because bids are known, of course, and the competition, not what everybody else did. So it's kind of either or. We can get it all done this year. The contractors indicated they would be able to mobilize that materials to do that. The money is in the endowment to do it, but we don't have to. There's two, four, maybe five years of life left on the balance of the roof. That's, that's by way of explanation, and.
Yeah, my, my concerns, I have a couple of concerns. The disparity, when, on August 7th, in our last meeting, we looked at bids and we approved the resolution to do the partial, you know, to address the problems. And there was a huge disparity between the low bid and the other four or five, whatever they were. And I always get concerned, again, from my background, that if somebody's coming in that low, there's got to be a reason why. I mean, either they missed the mark in terms of what the scope was, you know, they're short cutting something. So that, that's where I become suspicious. But, and, and looking at it and discussing, and having some discussion that. The other possibility is the bids from the other four were kind of, you know, this is a small job that we really want to take time to do it. Let's just bid high and, and whatever. So, so here we are. And my question to you today, as you know, Greg, was that we, in the budget, during the budget process, we were told that we're going to do a partial, you know, roof, roof fix, fix. We were told that again two weeks ago. And now tonight, we're saying, well, no, let's just the whole thing. So, again, I'm suspicious because I've seen it happen before where the Rupert Lowball's here comes back later and says, okay, well, why don't we just do the whole thing? And here, we'll give you a quote for that. And that just makes me uncomfortable. And if we are going to change the scope, I've said, i- if, if we agree that, okay, we need to do the whole group, then we ought to go, we ought to go back out to bed.
Yeah, well, I would be, that's not an option for this year, so we.
But you said that, but you said.
It wasn't, if it delays your concerns at all, it was a price we received at the time that bids were submitted. So they bid an alternative at that time to do the entire group, and that's why it occurred to us, well, maybe. In the endowment to do that. Yeah, so that's how it transpired. It's not like they came back later.
Okay, we know. I don't think that was clear on the August 7th.
No, it wasn't. Matt, Matt put on what he thought.
So we weren't dealing with all the information that we might have had otherwise. So I didn't know that. I appreciate that explanation. Um, yeah, I mean, we'll do what everybody else wants to do, but I just wanted to express that concern.
Now, is there anything you want to add about that, my mistake?
I will say that Breaman and some of these selected contractor is the one that put the scope together for us. They came out there and took a site with a site visit with us. They did the testing and they, they put the specs together for us, so they know the extent of the specs.
But none of the other bidders gave an alternate bid on doing the whole job. Is that correct? Is that right, Matt?
I, I don't know for certain if any of them gave an alternate for the whole job, but I do know that some of them gave alternates for other materials, which is why it was more expensive.
The only thing here.
So, you know, whatever your pleasure is, that is on the agenda right now. If you don't want to proceed with that, the, you should move that beginning as well. Do it either way.
I'd like. There has changed two years, and it's not always the past two years, well. High, we, we, we just don't know. And so we might be heading our bets right now and getting a deal, and that and that every homeowner and business owner, hey. Had eleven holes in my house and from the ice dam, and then I got two prices, wanting to do just the back of the house or the whole house. To make those decisions.
And I agree, and, and I understand the explanation, and I can support that. I would just pay to pour that money into it and then sell it to the county for a dollar.
I mean, that's, that's a whole other issue.
Well, that's what we were going to do two years ago.
But it needs to be fixed now.
I, I'd like to see it all done, especially just because we have the money in the endowment, and like Mr. Roberts said, it goes up and we may not have that money when we need to do the further repairs or, you know, like the rest of it, a couple of years later, we may not have that money in the endowment because the prices might fall up.
And these are our residents, the seniors that use, yeah, the, our city of Adrian residents. So whether we own the building or the county eventually owns the building, we're still helping. Some, I don't know about our majority, but I would imagine a lot of the people who use meal time, I know when I volunteered to donate, it's been in the city of Adrian, so they're still.
Having just started roofing a commercial building that I worked within, six months cost me thirty thousand dollars. Year and a half ago.
I guess I appreciate.
Having to get a rebid, bid some more, it cost me thirty thousand.
Same thing. Richard Caspary, I waited a year to do my parking lot on myself, made it to where it cost me twenty thousand dollars, so. You know, I understand it needs to be fixed now, but I do get the concerns, Mr. Gauss, I think we need to have the department head should know what's in every font, you know, so we're not sitting here and have this conversation again. So that's important. Know where the money's at, know where it's coming from, and so we can make informed decisions, so we don't have to keep going back, you know, backwards and try to have some explanation, so, but, I mean, we might as well get that now, but I get it. I do get your concerns. I do. Concerns this issue.
Good, well, thank you. All right. So back to the scheduled agenda. I wanted to check in with you regarding the strategic plan. You would, you would have for one addition, we talked about it last time, which was recognition in the objectives of homelessness crisis that we've kind of been experiencing this year. So I added an item under number two, which reads reduce the impacts of unhoused homeless with this. Did not make any other changes other than Mayor and I were talking about the agenda, and she suggested putting a responsible party for each of the one-year tasks on the strategic plan as well. And so I did that parenthetically for each of the one-year tasks, so the three goal areas as well. Was included, as though, like I say, really just to check in regarding that. You were pretty much okay with adding it as a resolution to adopt this time, but as Mayor and I were talking, because we wanted to make that tweak, wanted to just check in with you first before we go ahead and put it on the actual, so. This is your chance. Any further comments on draft of the strategic? That, you're enough. Moving right along. What's that?
Yeah.
Comment on the agenda, David?
Yeah.
Number two, we have a resolution of support for a program related to the hopefully soon to come EBI Community Center. And on your agenda as well, that was requested by a front of the line product. A now affiliated with Chromatica, and so I asked her to come and just kind of give you all an update on where that project's at and what the request is as it relates to that resolution you have on your agenda tonight, so I see it's here. I'll turn it forward.
Thanks for the invitation, Greg. We are going to apply for a grant that is available through LEO, which is the Michigan Department of Labor and Economic Opportunity. Sixty million dollars is available across the state. The maximum you can request, two and a half million dollars. Some for capital, some for programming. Chromatica would have taken the lead possibly on that grant, but hospitals are pro-pivoted. So we are working together with the Alliance Center for Workforce Development, the Action Agency, and Michigan Works Southeast. And so the four of us are collaboratively applying for this grant. I don't know the exact amount yet. It won't be two and a half million, and we're not going to ask for that much. But we do want to take advantage of opportunity for a community center. And so in your packet is the resolution, they ask for letters of support, and those from municipalities are better if it's in the form of a resolution. So that's what we asked of you to support that. The grant is due at the end of next week, so it had to be on tonight's agenda. Thank you for that. The community center, the EBI Community Center that you've heard about is going to be in East Adrian. And we will be together at this time, we're planning to be together with the Alliance Center for Workforce Development in one property. EBI will not be its own community center separate from the Alliance Center for Workforce Development. And so that's exciting. There's a lot of good reasons for us to partner in that way. The negotiation process is in place in terms of purchasing the building. If you're going to ask me tonight where it is, I can tell you, I can't tell you. I cannot tell you the location. The grant doesn't require that, but the grant does require the name of a community center. And so we are saying the Alliance Center for Workforce Development in the grant application. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about it. I can tell you that it is our hope to have the acquisition done and be able to take occupancy the first of the year. And in the meantime, we are launching program out of Comstock. And so we have a temporary location, and I'm just going to, one of them, that's out, and there's enough for everybody. Not to get sidetracked, but I did want to give you an update on the whole project, okay? And so we are offering programming starting in September, which you just mentioned. At Comstock with community partners. We are not waiting for this community center to be open, the permanent location. So Comstock is our temporary location, and this is just the September schedule. There will be different offerings in October, November, December. There'll be a schedule that will come out each month. People can register by calling, by emailing, or using that QR code at the bottom. So we're not waiting. We're, we're getting going. And the other thing that I want to share, in addition to hiring me full-time, we have two more staff members that are joining the team for the EBI Neighborhood Promise, and they will start in the next two weeks. One is an outreach coordinator. And one is a coordinator of education and programming. So Chromatica is fully committed. We're rolling it out. And we would like your support for this grant. And I can answer any questions that you might have, but that's just kind of an overview of where we stand right now.
Thank you, Matt. I, I. Much as city kicking in.
At this, yeah, only permission, yeah. Probably kind of can you later? Okay, I really encourage you to be. Update.
Ah, so moving right along, man. I, I wanted to check in also on the eligibility criteria for the revolving loan fund. We went over those pieces on July 3rd. I brought them again, and if you need them, I'll pass them around, so. They all have. I didn't have anything last time. I think as far as the basics of who would be eligible, I think this makes sense. I reviewed our discussion last time. Nobody had any other suggestions that are related to that, only the desire to get things moving sooner rather than later, and so. In that regard, if, if we're okay with this, and what I would like to do next time also is pass a resolution adopting these as the eligibility criteria. And we can go ahead and start rolling out the application process administratively. Fund is established already there. We just need to know who can apply. I would evaluate. Think these make sense. It's not for those who don't need it, but mind you, it's broadly focused on residential properties that are occupied or things that are related to this, the structure themselves. There was a question last time about, you know, does it relate to cleaning out rubbish or trash on the site or those kind of things. I, I don't think those rise to the level of something that we need to unfor. These would be more work done on, on people's homes. You know, through reference to these criteria, can't really afford to do themselves systems without a form of low interest. Well, at some point have to establish what the interest rate is, but it will be very, I, I would suggest it should be very low. I am likewise, well, when we get the loan agreement developed, we'll have to have firms, but again, they should, they should be not onerous, so that people can access the program, all without any undue restrictions, but, well. You know, we do ultimately want to go back to the funds, so. Have there been any further thoughts on this?
Do you have the necessary staff to administer the program?
Well, I mean, that, my plan has always been to have our community revitalization coordinator, most direct. But that will not be in terms of all the dot preparation. I think what we will, she'll be the intake, but I think what will, you know, and that's important because she understands now who's impacted by the code enforcement process and why they're asking. However, I think we'll probably end up partnering with the title company to do the, to do all the transactional. But I think we can be done the way it makes more sense. Got to make sure, we're going to be in touch with title company anyway. We got to make sure that there's good title to be, we from, and you know, I, I'm the director, that's the recorder.
So it, it's only those impacted by the code enforcement process. So this is an after the fact, instead of preemptive assistance. So if someone, okay, I don't know, someone believes that their porch is leaning, but they haven't been approached by the city to do anything about it, are they able to utilize the program?
Well, that isn't the way we drafted it, right?
Just want to be sure I'm understanding.
Right. You know, it is, and while it's a good chunk of money, it's not that much in the grand scheme of things. And so we want it targeted to those issues that essentially we've identified as priority. But, you know, like.
We set a macro, maximum amount of, that we would be making?
How, we did not. Yeah. We'll have discretion, I would, I would say, in terms of whether or not some application is accepted or not, but. I, I don't know that we want to prejudge that. It, it's some degree self-leasing, because as we look at things like that, at a, at the point where, where where the repairs to a structure are more than a certain percentage of a current market value of that structure, we don't deem that structure to be salvageable. But I would hope you wouldn't do that. My, that is, not in terms of homeowners, but in terms of rentals, that has been the case, some cases where we've ordered demolitions, so. Well, progress, so. Questions in terms of? Herein? But, well, let me know if anything comes to you. Depending on our next meeting, but I'll plan on bringing the road back. On the next agenda to adopt these, so. All right, well, man, that completes my scheduled items, plus two, all of them accounted by a lot of. Turn it back to you for what counted or other items.
Is there other items before we open it up? Is there other items before we open it up? At this time, we will open it up for public comment. We will start inside the city chambers first. And then we will open it up to Zoom participants after everyone inside the chambers has spoken. You will hear your time go off. She's going, the city clerk is going to be timing it over here. And you will hear it go off when you have exhausted your three minutes. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Can't talk hours, one that's all bogus. At the last meeting, Commissioner Hell made some comments to the mayor. I think that commissioners should question a lot of things that happen in the city. And I questioned why he chose to do that last week. So I'm going to remind you guys of October seventeenth. Twenty twenty-two, the comments that Commissioner Hell made during that meeting.
Comments about city commission. I'm the one that have made thought of that. It's kind of giving, I'm ready to be reminder of. Of the team that we're on when it comes to being. I'm the one that have made thought of that. Again, you're a team personal platform. To push their, you know, push their particular. It's kind of giving, you know, I'm ready to be reminder of. The team that we're on when it comes to being personal, the platform. To push their, you know, push their particular business order. Again, lies at all the official. Personal platform to push their, you know, push their particular business. Personal, again, platform. To push their, you know, push their particular business agenda. Lies at all to the.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I don't believe this is.
All right, it can be a public comment that you are doing that a recording that you are planning. Thank you very much. So your public comment time is young. It needs to be something you are saying.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Jeanette Hennigan, Adrian. I reviewed the strategic plan, the draft that you all had started. And I have some concerns that there's some of the things that are being left out and not addressed appropriately in your strategic plan. Number one, and enhanced community image, more bilingual staff. We do need more bilingual staff in Adrian. But you are saying that you're only going to research bilingual educational opportunities for the current staff. That's good, but you see need to be intentionally recruiting minority. Staff and bilingual staff, because you can, a staff person can take. Spanish classes for the next five years and still not be able to communicate with the people that come in. It's, it's very difficult to be able to communicate, communicate appropriately and do business. In a little class that you're going to train and that you're going to get. So you need to be intentionally. Recruit bilingual and minority staff for the city. Also, you under your one-year task with enhanced community image. Develop a job description for a communication marketing position. And then you have this long list of things that this person may be doing. DEI, HRC, branding, social media, website, calendar of events, surveys, town hall, translation services, mail and analysis. That's too much for one person to do, because DEI should be its own department. Most cities our size and larger. The state of Michigan and most businesses, large businesses and corporations have a department specifically for diversity equity inclusion. You can't put that on, on the person who's just going to be doing the Facebook page. That's, it needs to be intentional, intentional diversity, equity inclusion needs to be intentioned. If the city needs a department. That will be in tall intent and purposes to create an environment where all of its residents and employees feel valued. Included and empowered to help make Adrian a place where people want to live. And that takes you back to that very first page of your draft, that how you want Adrian to look in twenty twenty-eight. You want corporations and businesses to choose Adrian. You want people choosing to live in Adrian. You want bilingual staff. But you're, you're not going to get to it the way that you have put in this strategic. We need to be embracing a person who's specifically trained in diversity, equity, inclusion should leave that department. And embrace diverse cultures, ethnicities, genders, physical differences, life experiences at all costs under diversity.
Okay, B two five six, I would drive. Just, you know, the one that said, really what I wanted to also talk about today is an education board for consideration with the revolving loan fund. I know the, the purpose there, as I understand, is to address white, but I would also hope that that would open up to the possibility to address. ADA access for residents. The Rotary Club. Has recently been installing ramps, not only for community organizations, but this last weekend for a private individual that needed to have a ramp built. Not, not a blight issue, but. Financial support was needed on that front as we now have done a number of ramps just this summer alone. This would be a great opportunity for the city to provide funds to address the ramp issue. The great thing about Rotary is it's free labor as a result of that. So it results in a bigger bank of buck compared to. Having it contracted out. And then. Also, we have had some requests for porch replacements too. So if there's an opportunity for those proactive projects where the wars are starting to rot and come into play. A potential blight issue and somehow factor in that the service clubs within the community would. Be able to serve and apply for that grant in cooperation with the homeowner. That would be great.
King Ramos, I just want to. Come back to, I believe you said, reduce the impact of homeless in Adrian. That's not really the way you want to go about it. You're. You're reducing where they can be, etc., which should be processed. How can you bring more housing availability? How can you reduce the likelihood of being homeless? How can we do more to help rather than just trying to reduce them being around? I have a lot of concerns about that strategy, and I hope you guys would take a little bit more time to. Think about how to do that more intentionally, more aggressively.
Hey, I'm awesome. Major Michigan, you know, what Joaquin says about our homeless population. If there is a resolution of the HRC main meeting tonight. One thing seems to be missing on some kind of date or goal. Think about that resolution. Put a date on it, believe it, open ended. I assume that people are looking also at the rewrite that people spent time and have put money on. Don't forget to include the, the community that was excluded, the LBTQI people. Now rewrite if that's what we're looking at.
At this time, we will open it up to the Zoom participants. If you would like to speak during public comment, please state your name and address, and you will also hear the three-minute time limit. When you have exceeded it. There are no public comment. May I get a motion to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned, and our regular meeting will be out in the regular chambers at seven PM. Thank you, everyone.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for August twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Help.
Present.
Commissioner Robert, present. Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present. May I get a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R twenty-three dash zero thirty. To the regular agenda, which is from the city clerk stating a creation of an early voting consolidated county precinct. So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, yes. Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please. Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yeah.
Consent agenda approved by unanimous vote. Yes, I was like, you didn't ask me. Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-seven is from engineering. It is a resolution to approve a change order for the Peota Roof Replacement Project. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments about this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts. Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-eight is from engineering. It is a resolution to approve the renewal of an agreement with Manik and Smith for Engineering Services. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments for this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero twenty-nine is from administration. It is a resolution to support an application to the Michigan Community Center Grant Program. For a community center in East Adirond in collaboration with and located at the Alliance Center for Workforce Development. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move. Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Help. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Resolution R twenty-three dash zero thirty. Is a resolution from our city clerk, and it is of the creation of an early voting consolidated county precinct. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments in regards to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry. Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Help.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote. Commissioners, there are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? Moving on, it is now time for public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first. After everyone has spoken inside the city chambers that wishes to do so, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. Just remember that for the record, please state your name and address, and you will see your time limit on the screen. We will begin now.
Hello, King Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter Street. Greetings. I would like to come at a few things real quick. One, being with the HRC developments, I certainly look forward to more conversations. I hope this isn't just going to be left on a shelf. I'm quite excited to get to discuss this more and be able to move forward. So again, I just hope it's not going to be left on show. And then I would also like to make note of, I understand there's a couple of difficulties in this meeting in particular, but. It's not realistic to expect someone in the audience to be able to read the Spanish up there with it being that tiny. I am sure it helps those on Zoom, but it's not real helpful for here in person. And then I just want to make sure to reinforce you that. Housing first policies are how you deal with homelessness. It's not by trying to shoo them away or hide them or send them away. This is a. Countrywide issue, and the answer is housing first policies. It includes increasing housing availability. Being services to help homeless people get their lives together. Sometimes this includes transportation. Sometimes this includes education. Sometimes this includes a caseworker. My, housing first policies are the way that you're going to actually be able to address this issue, and I hope you guys take some time to look into them. Thank you.
Jeanette Hennigan, Adrian. I want to talk about the Resolution twenty-three one, one twenty-three. The resolution to suspend the activities and meetings of the Human Relations Commission until modification to its authorizing ordinance. Are completed and in effect, and a full complement of members have been appointed. Back at the pre, in the pre-session, one of the attendees said that they hope you put a date on it, and I agree with that. Don't, and like he said, don't leave us hanging. Don't leave it hanging. Also. What will the process be to fill those positions? Are you going to use the same process that you use to fill the other? City. Commissions that you have going, like the zoning board and all those other, are you going to use that same process? Or you're just going to, to just pick and choose whoever you want to be on there? Are you going to use that same process or are you just going to, to just pick and choose whoever you want to be on there? So we're concerned about that, but also it's very important that you be open and transparent. And your, in your strategic plan, you want a positive attitude. You want to see in twenty twenty-eight people with a positive attitude towards the city staff and city services. The only way you're going to do that is to be open and transparent. When you all, when we come up here and we talk and we ask questions, nobody ever says anything. We get no response. I don't know whether it's because nobody up there knows anything. Hopefully, somebody's taking the people's names and the next day called them and answered their question. That's how you're going to be open and transparent. You're probably, if you answer some questions or you say, we don't know, we'll get back with you. But there's probably twenty other people in the city that has that same question and you could fix a lot of the concerns, um, if you would just answer some questions. Call the people back the next day. Let them know whether it be, uh, Greg or his staff or somebody answer their questions. Thank you.
Erin Schescher, um, city of Adrian resident. Regarding the HRC suspension, I echo what Pat said during the pre-meeting. Um, I think it's crucial to set a deadline for the suspension. Otherwise, this seems like a backdoor way to have the HRC disbanded without actually voting that way. If you are looking for more work to be done, uh, on the ordinances, will you be holding another workspace session for the public to attend? Um, at the last work session, there was minimal opportunities after comment on the ordinances themselves. Um, so I'm sure that.
A presentation related to the opioid settlement and the funds that will be coming in, um, specific to Leno Bay Island and, um, the substance abuse and opioid epidemic that's, uh, taking place here. Um, I had the opportunity to, uh, reach out to Francine Zicks, who's, um, the community development coordinator for the county. And if, um, the members of the Adrian City Commission haven't done so, um, I would strongly encourage you to do so now so that there's an impact, um, to address the concerns, um, of the opioid, uh, um, not only from the prevention lens, which I stress through, um, schooling and education perspective, but also for, uh, treatment of those, uh, impacted currently. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners in there. I'd like to take this time to thank you for your vote on last meeting that you decided to keep the HRC. I appreciate the thoughts that you all had and we are going to move forward. I would like in the near future that you consider uh, not only changing the numbers of people that we have on our commission, which we were trying to put forward, seven instead of having, um, nine members, that we would only need two more people in order to make a full group for the HRC. The other thing I would like us to be able to do is have a meeting with the members that we do have. Um, I am suggesting that I could do a couple of meetings, um, if you would allow me to, to meet with one or two of the commissioners that we still have on the commission and come up with some of the suggestions and changes that you all would like us to have. And also to present it within the next month or so, if we could do that, uh, then we will have a timeframe that you all would have. We do have one person that is interested in joining that I've been told about. And I'm sure if we seek others that would submit their applications to you, then maybe in, within a month or so, we would be able to go forward. I would like to see the HRC at least have one meeting this year, because we were talking about quarterly meetings. I would like to see them have at least one meeting that we can plan for 2024. So I want you all to take that into consideration with the timeframe. And I look forward to working very hard to make sure that the Human Relations Commission comes up not only to the standard that you would like, but that it helps build our community in all the aspects that we're thinking. Diversity, equity and inclusion means that we include the city people. And I am ready to do that. Thank you.
At this time, we will now open it up to Zoom participants. For the record, please state your name and address if you choose to give public comment and you should see the time on your screen. If you don't, you will hear it. Hearing no public comment. Are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Adrian Community Academy applications closed on Friday and, uh, I received the list and the applications last night and reviewed them. And I'm happy to report we have nineteen applicants out of twenty seats. So that's great. I'm especially happy that we don't have to, um, review and take a look at not having someone attend who wants to attend. The, and, and I've heard that there's some discussion about why only twenty, why this, why that. I have to tell you, everything I've done for this academy is based on what my meetings with the city of Toledo, city of Midland and city of Troy have done for years and years. So the application was pretty much plagiarized from all three of them. Um, I did not write those questions. I took the amount of people from the people that have, the experts, the people that have been doing this. And so I'm really happy that we're going to have a near full, um, class. And I will be reviewing them with the city administrator just to go over them. I don't foresee any issues with all nineteen being a member of the first class of the academy. It's very exciting. The first academy will meet here September thirteenth from six thirty to eight. And we have some really good speakers lined up, including our, uh, county administrator will be joining us one evening. Our, uh, mayor, city commissioner, our city administrator, our city attorney, they're all going to be a part of it along with all of the department heads. So, um, I think it's going to be really interesting though. And Bradley and, and you don't forget, you are both invited to attend. Okay, all right. Thank you. If you have any questions, you guys, just let me know about what's going on. All right. Thanks. Oh, I will be contacting everyone within the next couple of days, just to give them the lineup. Uh, so that they, you know exactly where we're going and where we're going to be. Not all meetings will be in this building. Some will be at, um, the fire halls, some, one will be at parks, one will be at. Matt, I don't know that we decided where we're going to meet with your group. Say it again. Public Works, um, and I think there's a couple others. I know we're going to take a tour of the police area. So there will be a bunch of different places depending on the night. Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Oh, as, uh, Mr. Banky brought up, the, uh, county is, was the, uh, able to get some of the, um, opioid settlement funding. And so some of the things they're doing is education and, um, uh, they are doing a book study. Um, so I have some, uh, bookmarks from Ms. Zisk at the county. They're reading The Least of Us by Sam Quinones and, um, uh, between now and October second, and there's a Zoom link to do a community book study. So if anybody would like one of these, please feel free to come up and grab one.
Um, I just want to publicly thank Commissioner Roberts for all of her hard, hard work putting in for, you know, the citizens academy. She's really tirelessly worked on this and, um, just thank you for all that work. And I know that the community is very excited and very appreciative of that. And also just wanted to assure you, um, Jeanette, that the Human Relations Commission opening will be just like any other opening. It always is that way. Those openings are always listed. Um, just know that we have a staff member out right now for a little while. Um, so it may not be immediate, but it will be. And then it'll be pushed out on social media as well, saying that we are doing, that we have these openings and then they can apply. So, you know, encourage anybody and everybody that you, um, think would be a great candidate for that to apply for that. But it, it is the exact same process. So I just wanted to let you know. May I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.